Good evening, and welcome to the regular Pickle City Commission meeting Tuesday, February 18th, 2020. At this time, can we all stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now can the clerk please call the roll in the Pickle City Commission?
Mayor Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Hines.
Here.
Commissioner Grissom.
Here.
Commissioner Pearson.
Here.
Commissioner Foote.
Commissioner Foote is absent, and he called and said that he had a thing to do with his daughter.
I make a motion where you excuse Commissioner Foote this evening.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion pass. At this time, can we have a, I'd like to call to order a joint meeting with the Washington Township Trustees and the Pickle City Commission. Will the clerk call the roll between both?
Okay, for everybody? Okay.
Just, yes.
Not for everybody?
For everybody. Okay. So Commissioner Hines.
Here.
Commissioner Grissom.
Here.
Mayor Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Pearson.
Here.
Okay, and we have trustee Hartley.
Here.
Trustee Lang.
Here.
Trustee McMackin.
Mr. McMackin is absent, and I make a motion to acknowledge that he is out of the state for a while.
And do we also need to make a motion for Commissioner Foote for this as well? And I'll make that motion too.
I'll second both. Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
On your consent agenda tonight for the joint meeting is the approval of the minutes from the February 4th, 2020, joint meeting of the Washington Township Trustees and the Pickle City Commission. Resolution 23-20 rescinding Resolution R-18-20 and Resolution Number R-24-20 is a resolution appointing Cindy Pearson to the Board of Trustees of the Forest Hill Union Cemetery.
I need a motion.
I make a motion, we approve our consent agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Net, motion passes. At this time, we'll ask for an adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn?
Second.
Somebody make the motion.
Somebody needs to make it. No, I need to make a motion.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay? None? All right. Motion passed. All right, so now we're going to the regular Pickle City Commission meeting.
Okay, the consent agenda tonight includes a number of items. Approval of the minutes from the February 4th, 2020, regular Pickle City Commission meeting. Resolution Number 25-20, a resolution of appreciation for the public service of William J. Harding as a city employee. Resolution Number R-26-20, a resolution authorizing a three-year lease with the Pickle Youth Football Association. Resolution Number 27-20, a resolution authorizing a three-year lease with the Pickle Adult Softball League. Resolution Number 28-20, resolution authorizing a three-year lease with the Pickle Junior Baseball and Softball League Incorporated. Resolution Number 29-20, resolution authorizing a three-year lease with the Pickle Braves Youth Baseball. Resolution Number 30-20, a resolution authorizing a three-year lease with the Pickle Youth Soccer Association. Resolution Number 31-20, a resolution appointing Gary Konig to the Housing Council as the Planning Commission Representative. Resolution Number 32-20, a resolution appointing Joe Wilson to the Board of Zoning Appeals as the Planning Commission Representative. And Resolution Number R-33-20, a resolution reappointing Sharon Lyons to the Energy Board.
All right, before we approve that, I'd like to read the proclamation for Bill.
Go down there and present it to you.
Yes, I'm gonna present this to Mr. Harding, if you'll come forward for your long-term of service.
Step on over this way, sir, so they see you.
I can actually read this one.
All right.
All right, this is Resolution Number 25-20, a resolution of appreciation for the public service of William J. Harding as a city employee. Whereas William J. Harding has retired as Engineering Tech III with the City of Pickwa, and whereas his retirement follows over 45 years of faithful and dedicated service to the city and its citizens. It's a long time. Now therefore be it resolved by the Commission of the City of Pickwa, Miami County, Ohio, and all members elected thereto concurring that, in recognition of the city, recognition and appreciation of the public service of William J. Harding with the City of Pickwa, this commission tender its unanimous and respectful tribute by this resolution, which shall be a matter of public and permanent record. The resolution shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period allowed by law. I'd like to present that to you. Thank you very much. At this point, we'll ask for a motion for the consent agenda.
I move that we adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor? Nope. Oh, public comment on the consent? Any public comment on the consent agenda? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. Next is new business.
Read the resolution.
I'll read it. New business, Resolution Number R-34-20.
A resolution authorizing a purchase order to Horton Emergency Vehicles Company for the purchase of a Medic for the Fire Department.
Fire Chief Paul Snyder will provide the staff report.
Thank you. Our department put together a committee to research replacing our 1998 Medic that we've had in service that's done a stellar job for the city over the years, but we wanted to keep in with our reliability of providing emergency services for the city and it's come past its life cycle. And so we went out and researched with different manufacturers, we went and visited fire departments and talked to them about what units that they have in place, and the committee narrowed it down to three manufacturers. There's 10 that are on the state bid that are offering vehicles, and out of that, they chose the Horton Medic. They looked at things as far as storage features, lifecycle cost, reliability, maintenance cost, ruggedness, and this came in out of the three as the lowest-priced unit when we looked at those on the state bid offerings. And with that, we plan on trying to repurpose it. If one of the city departments, we typically will put them to the police department for that, so that'll be under evaluation. If not, then it'll, if nobody's interested in it, then it would go to Gov. Deals or something like that for, for open purchase.
Any questions from the commission on this item? Any questions from citizens?
How much?
You gotta get up and ask, you can't just ask from there, please. Please, please.
I would say how much they want to ask you for, right? So how much, how much is this resolution for? I mean, I don't know how you guys can vote on if you don't know how much.
The budgeted amount was 22,900, 295,000, 0.00. The expenditure is $276,795.09, so the expenditure is actually less than the $295,000 budgeted item.
That's in the agenda packet, which means you had access to that as well.
Right. So, so this is a, this is a request for $277,000?
It's a budgeted, budgeted amount. They have to approve it, um, for expenditure.
Nope, I'll take a motion.
I'll put a motion to approve Resolution Number R-34-20.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. Next is Resolution Number R-35-20.
A resolution authorizing a purchase order to Baker Vehicle Systems, Inc., for the purchase of two Green mowers for Echo Hill Golf Course.
Ms. Holt Tappel will provide the staff.
Thank you. Echo Hills Golf Course is requesting approval to purchase two Jacobson Greens King mowers for a total cost of $62,570, which will replace similar 2011 equipment used in our daily operations of maintaining the course. This capital expenditure was included in the 2020 budget and also includes a two-year, 2,000-hour warranty. These mowers will allow staff to mow the grounds more efficiently with less maintenance costs. Having used this brand of mowers previously, staff found them to be very reliable and are also knowledgeable on how to maintain and repair the units for several years. Rather than trading in the older mowers, we plan to sell them on Gov. Deals where historically we have sold equipment for more than the trade-in value. Baker Vehicle Systems, Inc. has been a trusted vendor of the city for many years. Delivery would be expected in four to six weeks. In addition, historically, the golf course breaks even on operation costs except if we have to pay off debt, purchase capital equipment such as replacing mowers and other equipment, have a major construction repair, or if revenues are down due to decreased play from prolonged terrible weather conditions. However, with the mild winter, we are looking forward to an early spring and welcome and encourage everyone to come play our beautiful course.
Any questions from the commission? There's no debt service on the golf course at this time?
No, currently there isn't. It was paid off last year.
And the only thing that we have is this capital item outside of?
We have this capital item and some scheduled repairs for later on in the season.
No other questions?
I just wanted to state that Kurt does a great job maintaining the golf course.
Yes, he does.
He does. Because of their, his excellence in servicing the equipment, we have been able to forego repurchasing this type of equipment for over nine-plus years.
Well, and as we look at these, the summary of the quotes, this one is more than $10,000 less than the other ones, so.
All right. Any comments from the citizens? Then I will take a motion.
I'd like to move that we adopt Resolution Number R-35-20.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next is Resolution Number R-36-20.
A resolution authorizing a purchase order to Ohio Cat for the purchase of a Skid Seer loader with multiple attachments at the wastewater department.
Mr. Melvin will provide the staff report.
Thank you. We are nearing the end of our construction later this summer, woo-hoo, and we'll hit the punch list and be working on that as well. We have started new processes in November. We fired up the liquid treatment train and have flow going through all the new tankage. Currently, we're working through solids processing as well. We have a new thickener, we have a centrifuge, and we have a storage barn for biosolids handling. Those are all new features, we've not had that before. We've actually had contract hauler, at contract operator and contract hauler and contract land deployer. We would still be in need of the contract hauling and the contract land applying, but in the process of us handling it now, we're in need of a piece of heavy equipment. We weighed several options. Originally, the thought process was to get a big conventional standalone front-end loader, maybe with a snowbox so we could handle, you know, snow events as well, but it seems like that would sit around more often than if we were to get this. We are gaining three times the space down there with roadways, access roadways, and we're, you know, gonna try to get a snow thrower with this request, and then a broom for storms, leaf sticks, whatnot, a lifting crane for the front of it, and I think it's would better suit some of our needs and have multi-uses. We, this is an $89,120 request, and we originally budgeted on the front inlet or $150,000, so there is some quite substantial savings there. Troy is the Cat dealership, so it's fairly local. If we were to have to have repairs and haul it, it beats going to Dayton or Cincinnati. And so we're just, like I said, we're requesting this piece of equipment for our uses.
Any questions from the commission?
Well, the expenditure is $89,120, so it's substantially less than what we budgeted.
And we did budget it, that's right. Any questions from the citizens?
I have, what model is that? What, so it's a Cat 299?
It's a Cat, it's Caterpillar 299 XD or XE. It's a tracks-type steer. It's much larger than your conventional Bobcat style.
Why didn't you go to John Deere?
This was competitively bid through Sourcewell, and John Deere is Cincinnati-based for any repairs.
Well, there's a John Deere dealer.
Dayton, and then any of the others are, any of the other brands are Cincinnati. And we've had Cat equipment through the city, through Troy as well.
There's nowhere where you can competitively bid that Cat 2, because another Cat dealer is not going to bid against this.
No, this was, this is the same as the state bids through Sourcewell.
When you compared prices with John Deere, what was the difference?
There wasn't a difference, this is competitively bid.
What model did you?
We didn't. There was, there was, it's a competitively bid through Sourcewell.
What's that mean? I'm sorry.
There's different types of national purchasing programs, and they bid out to large companies, and they're awarded contracts that we can utilize, whether it's state contracts or other type of organizations that we belong to, that are, this equipment's already been bid out nationally.
Okay.
So we can select that because it's already gone through bids.
I see, so there's really no need to find out what John Deere's price would be?
No, they're low, they're the lowest automatically because they've already been recognized by that, yeah.
Good question, thank you. I'll ask for a motion at this time, if there's no other questions.
I'll make a motion for Resolution Number R-36-20.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. Next is Resolution Number R-37-20.
A resolution requesting authorization to enter into an agreement with Hall &amp; Associates, Inc., for professional engineering services as related to the Fountain Boulevard Canal Sanitary and Manhole Replacement Project.
Mr. Johnson will provide staff report.
Good evening. The Underground Utilities Department is asking for the approval of the contract with Hall &amp; Associates. In August of 2019, the underground staff discovered a sanitary manhole just north of the Echo Lake Bridge, and about, and about 30% of the manhole is exposed to the canal. The manhole is constructed of brick and mortar, is probably at least almost 100 years old. So over, you know, the course of freezing and thawing, the mortar has become compromised, it's allowed roots to go into the manhole, and now it's taking on canal water. So we're asking you tonight to award this contract with Hall to, to perform topographical survey, geological engineering, hydraulic study, coordinate with regulatory agencies like ODNR and the Ohio EPA, and develop three design alternatives, and assist us in bidding, and then give us administrative assistance for the actual construction. Hall was selected through the, the request for qualifications, there was six scope of services that went out, and two came back, and Hall actually scored the highest out of the, out of them two. And we have Cheryl Green with Hall &amp; Associates in the audience today, so if you have any questions for her, please feel free to do so. And the, this is an unexpected expense, the, the expenditure is $1,000, $115,925.
Let me just share with you that the importance of having reserve funds in our utility, in the various utility funds for these type of emergencies. Otherwise, without the reserve funds, we would be out having to borrow money to make these type of repairs, so that's part of how our rates are based, so that we have sufficient reserves to be able to do emergency projects like this. Just to give you an understanding, that this, once we do the design work, this project in reality could cost a half a million to three-quarters of a million dollars. It's that major, so it has to be completely redesigned and rerouted and so forth, so that we don't have this in the future. So these are the type situations that we run up against, especially in dealing with utilities, and why it's important to have sufficient funding to be able to go in and do these emergencies when we need to. So this is certainly a serious issue, because one of the, the bad thing about this, it could cause contamination in Echo Lake and also in the canal. So then you're getting into a really, really lot of expense, so it's important that we address this and try to get it taken care of before we have any type of sewer backups in those, those particular lines.
Any questions from the commission?
I just got one, just thinking about that, when you said 100 years old, is there any other parts within the canal that we'd have to have those same concerns?
To my knowledge, right now, I don't know of any that's, that actually crosses the canal. I think that's the only one that this, the watershed for this particular manhole is Echo Lake Fountain Boulevard up around that area, so that's the only crossing.
How'd we settle on Hall &amp; Associates as the, the one doing the?
Excuse me?
How did we settle on that?
The company submitted RFQs, and we evaluated those companies to determine who has the best expertise to deal with this.
Any questions from citizens?
Yeah, I have a question. So this could possibly be a half a million to 750,000, or some half a million dollar?
Could, could be.
Okay, and so you're gonna take that money out of our 22 million that we have set back?
22 million.
I don't know, what, is there a fund out there that the citizens?
There's a, all the, all the utility funds have reserves on an annual basis, so we try to keep reserves there to be able to handle any unexpected emergencies, so that we don't have to go out and try to borrow money, which is much more expensive on that. So, but we have, we'll have to picture we have the reserves in there, we'll probably end up doing the design this year and construction next year.
But that's the reason I'm asking, is, you know, I, you've talked to somebody from Troy, and the first thing they'd tell you is how great their bond rating is. Of course, they're trying to give a little jab up toward Pickwa, because I hear, and I don't know that, that, and I've had professional people tell me that we might have problems with our bond rating.
Actually, we don't have a bond rating because we have no general fund obligation debt.
So then in other words, we, when they talk about their bond rating, then?
They're borrowing money.
They are.
We're borrowing money though, too.
No, we're not borrowing, only the, only on the loans that we have, but we're not going out for general obligation, those are revenue.
But we don't have any bonds right now?
We don't have any general obligation bonds at all.
Okay.
Now, we have loans out for water and sewer, as you know, from having to build two new treatment facilities, that we have to pay those loans back, but your bond rating comes off of general obligation bonds.
Okay, so then that has no effect on us? So somebody just can't come down the road and say, hey, we don't like your financial statements, I'm gonna jack your interest rates up 2%, 3%?
Uh, no, because we don't owe anybody any money, except for the loans, which you have guaranteed fixed rates for.
I get that, now, just quickly then, so I have been told, and I know that I need to research my stuff a little better, because sometimes I say things that aren't correct, and I don't ever want to do that. Now, I have been told that, that we paid into this utility fund since the last set of commissioners raised the utility rates, and into that fund went all this excess money to make it so that we could get the loans that we got at favorable interest rates. Okay, and so how much money is in that fund? 20 million? I mean, I've been told 20 million, 22 million?
Off the top of my head, I don't know what the, I don't, I'd have to look, each fund is, each fund has its own reserve, whether it's water, sewer, power, stormwater, so each one has its own reserve fund. The rates are based on being able to make sure that we have, we can operate the facilities, any capital projects, any emergencies that come up that we able to handle, any equipment that we need to purchase, so that we don't have to go out and borrow money at a much higher cost than having the reserves ready to pay for those type of things. I, off the top of my head, I don't know what the, the reserves are in each of those.
I mean, but we're borrowing, we have 75 million borrowed, so we're borrowing money.
We have loans.
And to offset, to get favorable interest rates, we have this money in reserve to, to, to say, okay, we can borrow at 3% because we've got 21 million on reserve.
The, the rates that we have cover the, any type of loan repayments that we have to make, too. So all those things are figured in, that's how we come up with the rate structure.
Okay, so then, I don't want to beat the subject up, I just want to make sure I don't misquote myself again. So then, I'm gonna say there's $22 million in that fund, because I believe I read that in your financial statements.
I, I don't know what that number is off the top of my head.
You're not disputing that at the moment, you're just saying?
I don't know what it is, so I couldn't dispute it or say that.
So then those, those are reserved funds, and those funds have come from us overpaying into our utility fund?
Not overpaying, but paying what it costs to operate and have reserves to be able to handle emergencies, too.
Okay, so then we have, we've accumulated $22 million of, whatever that figure is, and so you took 600, you took 600,000 of that and spent it on electric to the canal, or to the, your project down at, you know, the, the riverfront property?
The river, the utility work that was done in the Lock Nine Park, one was replacing a stormwater line that had to be replaced, it was old.
I was up here, I didn't want to hear, I was up here, and I could accuse you.
No, 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 I'm gonna make sure I explain it to you.
Okay.
So that funding came out of the stormwater fund, there were removal of electric poles that were there from, poles that weren't needed anymore from DPNL, those were removed from the park, from the power, that, those were all budgeted projects that were part of our cost for that year.
Okay.
We didn't take money from other funds and so forth.
No, I understand that, but I'm just saying, what, what you're proposing to spend now is another half a million dollars or so of funds that are set in reserve?
That's correct.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions from the?
Jay Roman for us, 6SI. Could using these funds affect rates in the future?
Well, it depends on the type of emergencies and capital projects that could be, happen in the future. We don't know what that is, we hope not, but we just, we have no idea, it depends on what happens in the future. We deal with a lot of old stuff at times, and we could have emergencies come up, we try to anticipate those, that's why the rates are where they are.
Well, in your opinion then, could this project here affect rates, is more what I'm asking?
Not immediately, no, no.
If 90 years ago, our forefathers had considered that one day they might need to replace that new water plant out there, if they had done it at that time, we wouldn't find ourselves in the situation that we are today where, you know, all of a sudden, no, we don't have 40 or 45 million dollars set aside for these projects. So it is wise and prudent for us going forward to continue on the reserve program, so that down the road, our grandchildren's grandkids won't have to go through that dramatic rate hike that we went through recently. And I understand, that's, it's tough on the community, but just a fraction of a cent put away per gallon 90 years ago, all that time, we, I think, would have been in fine position to actually fund those projects in-house. But if people complain about having those reserves... But if people complain about having those reserves, then, you know, someday down the road, we're going to face the same thing. So I certainly approve of the city's finances and Cindy's been here forever and.
Does a good job.
She, she's a, she's a top-notch bookkeeper. No, she's not a top, bookkeeper, that's understating her value. She's a, she's, we couldn't have a finer person here, in my opinion, for that. So, and that goes for all the staff, so hats off to Bill Harding and, which, that's what I think about this city, it's reflected in the employees we have.
I agree.
I know at the Energy Department, I don't go to just six meetings a year or seven, whatever we have, I'm down there sometimes a couple times a week. And it is often that I run into a retired ex-employee down there, you know, doing the extra, they want to continue to be part of that even after their retirement. And, and Bill, his hair color has changed since I remember he first came here, so that was a, it's just, we have Fred Langston here retired recently and so if it's not a good place to work, you don't have long-term employees.
I agree.
So we have the police and the fire department and right on down to everybody that works for the city, I know a lot of them and so.
All right.
Good job, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. No other questions from citizens? I'll take a motion.
I make a motion, we approve resolution number R dash thirty-seven dash twenty.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? Motion passes. We're going to skip down and go to resolution number R dash forty dash twenty. Our law director has an appointment.
A resolution declaring the city's intention to appropriate one point eight, seven one acres of land located in the northeast and southeast quarters of section one, town eight, range five E, located in Washington Township, Miami County, Ohio.
Mr. Patrizio.
This property is adjacent to the Stillwater Dam and it's next to the water.
Swift Run.
Swift Run, I'm sorry, I keep saying Stillwater. Swift Run Dam and the Ohio Department of Natural Resources and the Engineers Department have asked that we acquire this land for safety purposes and future development of the dam out there. We've attempted to negotiate with the current owners of the property and have not been successful. We're about, in, in that negotiation, we're about seventy thousand dollars apart and at this point, the charter requires us to go before the commission and ask, and this is the initial step, is getting a resolution. We'll have to come back and get an ordinance from you in probably about a month or so, allowing us to go forward. There's also statutory obligations we have to do, which we've already done most of those and once all of that's completed, if we haven't reached an agreement, by that point in time, we'll file a lawsuit against the owner and acquire the property. We'd be more than happy to reach a resolution with the owner, but at this point in time haven't been able, I mean, we're too far apart, we're just not there yet.
Any questions from commissioners? So fair market value, the guy does not want to, to sell the, the place for fair market value?
The fair market value, and I'm going off the top of my head, that we had appraisal done, it was thirty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. They purchased it at thirty-five thousand not too long ago, within the last two years, and they are requesting a hundred and ten thousand, so.
That property is currently vacant and not in condition to be habitable?
It's not.
So no one's living there at this time?
Mm-mm.
Okay.
And no one has for a while, correct? Because I can remember back when.
Can you explain a little bit more to me the importance of acquiring this property then?
I'm sorry.
The importance of acquiring this property, why?
Well, it's, uh, we're, we're being faced with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources requiring us to look at our dams, which with housing right at the base of the dam could require us to expand our dams, the width and length of the dams in order to provide protection of this property, which could run millions of dollars. And so, under the conditions, it is important that we get this property both from a safety reason, but also of a cost effectiveness of, of doing this in order to save the city millions of dollars.
Any other questions from the commission? Any questions from citizens?
This is going to sound really combative, but I don't mean it this way, but I don't know how else to say it. If I understand this right, it's, if you guys can't come up with a resolution, like as far as where you guys are on money, your intention is to sue them and take it from them?
So there's a process in Ohio called eminent domain.
Okay.
First of all, we're, we're attempting to negotiate a, a agreeable price. We've been involved with this and are involved in negotiations for over six months on this particular property and we're just not even close to coming together on it. So the state of Ohio allows us to basically file an eminent domain lawsuit against the property owner whereby we pay the appraised value to them and then it, then goes through the process where we essentially become the owner. They'll have the right to argue that the property value is worth more. We've had professional appraisers out there to appraise the property and will argue that it's not.
So their argument against giving it to you is just money?
It's money.
It has nothing to do with sentimental value, they have no plans for it, it's just, I want?
I mean, I don't know their full reasons, I know that the reasons why we aren't reaching an agreement at this point of time is, is a monetary reason.
Right, thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions from the citizens? Okay, at this time I request a motion.
I move that we adopt resolution number R dash forty dash twenty.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'm sorry, I have to leave, I have another commitment.
You are excused, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll go back up to resolution number R dash thirty-eight dash twenty.
A resolution authorizing the amended lease of a portion of parcel number N forty-four dash two five zero zero six three.
Mr. Birch, will provide staff before you.
On January twen- twenty twenty, the city commission approved resolution R seventeen dash twenty authorizing the lease of a portion of parcel number N four four two five zero zero six three. While working with Water Department, Planning and Zoning and NK Telco to set a final location for the communication hut, it was decided to place the hut along the southern portion of the property instead of along the northern portion. Exhibit B in amended, in the amended lease shows the new approximate location. No other changes have been, been made to the lease that was approved at January twenty-first, twenty twenty city commission meeting.
This just changes the location of where the hut is.
Doesn't, um, cost anything?
No.
Any questions from commission? Any questions from citizens? You got to come up, Bill, and you've got to say who you are and, and you can ask your question, please.
Please confirm that we are on thirty-eight dash twenty?
Please just, please just follow the procedure.
Are we on thirty-eight dash twenty?
Yes.
Any other questions from citizens?
I make a motion for resolution number R dash thirty-eight dash twenty.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Last one would be resolution number R dash thirty-nine dash twenty.
A resolution requesting the replat of in lots eighty-six, eighty-six and eighty-six, eighty-seven in the Indian Ridge subdivision and the vacation of an unused storm sewer easement.
Mr. Smeasie.
Thank you, this is in response to a request we received asking to replat two of the lots in the newest section of Indian Ridge, the Point at Indian Ridge. The original preliminary plan documents had identified a, a potential need for a storm sewer easement between two of the lots that are laid out in this section of the subdivision. It's subsequently been determined that that easement is not needed and that there's no need to place a storm sewer in this area. That combined with the applicant's interest in combining these two lots into one larger tract, has brought forward this request for a replat. The item was presented to the planning commission at their most recent meeting, a public hearing was held. The planning commission unanimously, unanimously recommended approval of the replat and because there's the item, the issue of the easement being vacated, it's necessary for the city commission to also act on this matter.
Any comments from the commission?
No.
Comments from citizens?
Yeah, I have a question about this. So then, in two thousand nineteen, there was two hundred and twenty or so new housing permits issued in Miami County. And Pickwa had five of those, which is stunning to me.
Is that a question about this?
Yeah.
Okay.
So my question is, is that are these included, these, are these plats, are these two of those five? So what are we rezone, so are we rezoning, so, I mean, so then maybe next year we'll have more houses?
The Point section, which is being developed at Indian Ridge, I believe, has thirty-six units. So there started development on those thirty-six. This is just replating to eliminate the need for, there's no need for storm drain through there.
So we're making?
But they have a new, they have approved thirty-six new house units in this new section of the Indian Ridge, the Point.
Okay, so next year maybe we'll have forty and ninety-five?
They're already under construction, so, yeah.
Thank you.
And, and I'd like to say the Alexanders.
They're here, they want to speak.
Yeah, they're here, yeah, they're here tonight and I know I have been in, in quite a few of their houses and they're doing great work out there.
They are doing great work. I got to tour some as well. Thank you.
Rob Alexander, Union Shelby Road, I'm the president of Indian Ridge Builders, thank you for the kind words, we appreciate them. I will not take a lot of your time this evening, we appreciate Chris and Kirsten for their help with this. As he said, we're requesting the abandonment of an easement that was not part of the actual design, it was part of the original plan, but we did not need it as a part of the design that was implemented. The family that is going to build there, which happens to be my daughter, is wishing to merge a couple properties together and to do so, we need to abandon this right away, or easement. So we appreciate your consideration of our request. Again, this is consistent with some things we've done over the last five years. I also want to say a couple things with the, the commissioner's consent. I'd like to share our appreciation and congratulations to our ward, Commissioner Chris Lee and his appointment as mayor. We're proud of him and we thank you for your service to our community and to our ward, so we appreciate you.
Appreciate you, thank you very much.
Since we relaunched Indian Ridge in two thousand fourteen, we've built more than thirty new homes, to answer the question. Of those thirty new homes, eighteen of the families located from outside of Pickwa, so it's given growth to Pickwa. There now are one hundred and ninety-four families who call Indian Ridge home. Since two thousand fourteen, the values of property and real estate in Indian Ridge have increased by thirty percent. The newest homes that are currently under construction or about to be constructed range in price from two hundred and fifty to over five hundred thousand dollars. We believe that with the addition of the new Kettering Health Facility along I seventy-five, we think the I seventy-five corridor is poised for a new era of growth. We're excited about the future of Pickwa and more specifically about the growth of our community. Indian Ridge hosted a number of great events, including a huge national night out honoring our first responders, which was attended by over three hundred people. We've had a Christmas luminary and decorating contest, which was a spectacular event with ninety percent of the community participating. Indian Ridge and the Point in Indian Ridge is a wonderful, family-oriented community and we are experiencing a lot of positive results in that area. If you haven't been out to Indian Ridge recently, we'd like to invite you out there, we'd encourage you to make the time, we'd love to show you through and show you what we believe is one of Pickwa's greatest assets. Again, we thank you for your considerations. Do you have any questions for us?
No, keep building.
All right, thank you.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll call for a motion.
I make a motion for resolution number R dash thirty-nine dash twenty.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Now, we're at this point in the meeting for a public comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the city commission regarding agenda items, issues, or to provide information. Comments are requested to be limited to five minutes and specific questions should be addressed to the city manager.
Jay Roman, four oh six West High.
Sir.
Um, just something I want to put out here, and I've been debating how I'm going to say this all day. About five years ago, Steve Baker posted something on one of his pages, which I reposted in case you don't pay attention and watch Pickwa. And it was a question about the electric rates and it was actually five years ago, around this time. Mr. Grissom, you probably saw it, you pay attention to the page. And Steve was looking into why people were getting spikes in their bills, five years ago. And somehow, I don't know if someone shared this at some point and it came across their memories and, so someone commented it and it all came back up, that's how social media works, you comment on anything and it just recycles through the algorithms. And it got, it came across my way and of course, the issue with utilities automatically gets my attention or someone forces it to be, come across my way. And so I wrote a public letter to Mr. Baker asking for his attention on the issue because we still haven't found a solution all these years later to this problem. You can debate what caused it, it's irrelevant. What's relevant to me is finding a solution to it. So I wanted to publicly say, not Steve Baker himself, but one of his colleagues has contacted me and I will be talking to the news about this situation, hopefully sooner than later. But my point of bringing it up is, I would like to go to them when I do and explain to them that we're working on a solution, one, once again. For those who don't know, I contacted both Commissioner Grissom and Commissioner Lee this week about the pieces of equipment we bought for appliance meters, I don't know what the official name is, Gary. But I know back in July, that was one of the things we talked about, was getting these appliance meters so people can check their appliances to see if it is on their end. They were purchased, but I wasn't made aware of it. You, Mr. Lee, and you, Mr. Grissom, weren't aware of what's going on. So we've had this piece of, a couple, five pieces of equipment now, that have just been sitting there that could be used to help the people and no one really knew that they were available. And I'm just as guilty as everyone else here, I'm not pointing fingers because I myself have kind of dropped the ball on utilities issue because I've widened my range of things that I focus on now, but I feel like it's time to get back on track with that. We've got a decision at the end of the year about the water rates coming up and a lot of people are still suffering. Now, the reason why this, this article got resurfaced is because again, recently there was more and more people that have came across my way talking about spikes in electric bills and they can't explain why. And it coincides from five years ago. I mean, it was, when I first came across, I think it was February, I can't remember the exact date, February thirteenth or twelfth or something like that. And it was almost five years to the date when all these spikes started getting reported once again. Now, it could be coincidence, I, I don't, I don't know. But the point is, is that a lot of people still cannot explain these bills. And like I said, I'd like to be able to talk to these people and tell them that we are working for a solution together and not, oh, we're still far apart, because you guys know me, I'm going to be one hundred percent real.
You got to be real, I want you to be real.
That's, that's how I am.
And we're, I'll be real too.
Absolutely.
You know, in order to solve a problem, you got to know where you came from in order to, to know where you're going.
Absolutely.
And so, the electric rates have been constant, right?
Absolutely.
All right, for the last, what, since two thousand fourteen?
Yeah, twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen.
Something like that, twenty fifteen. And there have been scheduled increases in water and wastewater for the last four years.
For sure.
Right? So that accounts for some of it.
For some of it, yeah. But at the same time, a part of me kind of feels, again, I don't want to point fingers, that's not my point here.
No, no, it's not.
But it's a cold month. So when somebody's out there, when somebody's out there, I mean that, but when somebody's out there reading meters and such, it, I'm sure human error is to hurry up and get the numbers in the runway or just something. And we do, I get things across my board all the time of, of people whose bills are incorrectly because a decimal point was put here or just something, you know? So while it is, we can, we can fight all day about whether or not it's usage or not or whatever.
Are they fixing it? Are they fixing it, though? When the city makes a mistake, do they adjust it? Do they fix it?
It's hard to tell at times, because usually at that point, once I give, and this is across the board, once I give, here's who you need to talk to, usually the conversation stops. But, I mean, that's just one aspect that we're talking about here. This was what brought the cycle back around. It brought one of Steve Baker's colleagues to my desk, because he started looking into the page and realized there's more than the electric going on here. We still have an issue with water, and I'll go ahead and cut it off at that.
That's your calling. So, but no, I hear what you're saying, and are we working on it? And the people who have the spikes need to address, come to the city.
Well, the only thing I can say is, we don't know what individual houses, what the situation is.
No, absolutely.
If we find out that we've made an error, we certainly correct it.
They do correct it.
And in any case that I've ever known. But other than that, of trying to determine what individual houses' uses are, I don't know.
No, and I don't think, I don't think anyone's expecting you to. My main point of all this, and I'll sit back down. My main point of all this is, it brought back the attention of the utilities in general, and it hit the refresh button, and we're all right back towards it. Now, I myself have not had a problem with the electric side, and anybody I have had come across my way with the electric, we have been able, as much as I've been involved anyway, we have been able to at least start figuring out the issue. But that's, again, one side of the large picture, and that is what was brought up after everything. It was, brought me back to the pieces of equipment that I didn't know, you know, didn't exist. It brought me back to the original list of the utilities. That's the whole point of this here, so.
Yeah, on the equipment, on the equipment, I just, your point's well taken. You know, we said we were ordering it. I, you know, probably was my fault. I didn't realize, we didn't notify, whatever, I don't know. But we told everyone that we would order the equipment, which we did. So I'll take the blame for, if word didn't get out, but that's on me. I try to remember everything.
Yeah, it's a lot.
I find I'm losing it sometimes.
Well, and I'm looking at that original resolution that we did back in, and I'm trying to remember. It was September-ish, October, August, September-ish, or whatever, and I have the resolution in front of me. And then I know we received an email from our City Manager on the 19th of September, which I have in front of me as well, which I believe we referred back to. You, I mean, in the commission meetings, we talked about this, of that the financial software programs that was being looked at, it's underway. And things, the posting on the city website, the assistant programs available to customers, that's been completed. The pool fill-up policy, which waves the wastewater feed, that's underway, and will be completed in the spring by the time we get to the summer, and people will want to know about that. And here, it says the amp voltage meters were ordered, and so we did hear that. The payment plan policy for extenuating circumstances was completed. The establishing a roundup fund for customers needing assistance, the auditors advised not to establish that fund. Establish a shut-off policy for cold weather, that was completed, and it's posted on our website. And to post all utility rates on a single-city webpage, which they completed as well. I just want to make sure that that, because I know, I mean, believe me, we all lived through that time, in trying to address those things and make sure that people had that information. So I just wanted to repeat that again, as to where we were back in September on that resolution, which the resolution is still part of our documents. I mean, that resolution that we discussed back in the fall is, I mean, we voted on it, we approved it, and that has not changed. So I just want you to hear that.
No, absolutely. But I think you can echo the fact that we did get off the ball on it a little bit, because we had a discussion about that. For the people who aren't watching, Chris Lee, we had a discussion about that. We did drop the ball on it a little bit. We have let it go. There are still people that are having these issues.
There are, and each person needs to come, and we can deal with it. But if we don't know about it, we can't deal with it.
Sure. I'm going to sit down now.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Oh, you back in 921 camp?
How are you, sir?
I got a couple of things.
Yes, sir.
We're on the utility. Today, I got my bill. It was estimated. I called up there, and one of the excuses was, it was cold. The gate was froze, so they couldn't open the gate. Well, I checked the weather from, it was read on the 6th of February. From the 6th of February, four days later, the high was 59 to 32. Last Thursday and Friday, when we had snow, ice, rain, and you name it, and the cold, I was able to go out my gate. The one that reads the meter is a very heavy guy, so I don't know why he was not able to open my gate. So that's my issue on that.
Did you call and ask?
Yeah, I called them, and they said, well, first it was, what was it? It was too cold, and then maybe it was because the gate was frozen, he didn't want to break the gate.
But you were able to-
So they, in other words, they told me what they wanted me to hear. And the other issue is, we got a building sitting right over here, where many of people come in and out of this city, over here and that, and it's been like this forever and ever and ever. Why is it still standing?
Pickwa Milling? Is that what you're talking about?
No, right over here. Used to be pollings.
Oh, right behind us?
Behind us?
Pollings.
Oh, yeah. Okay, yeah, that way, yeah. It's been like that for several years. You see where it's already falling down.
That is in the works of, hopefully we'll have that resolved soon.
Okay. And Chris, I need to show you something and talk to you about something afterwards.
Okay, absolutely. Thank you, sir.
Bill John, 677 Sunset Drive. I just want to kind of summarize a few things that I've been talking about the last few weeks. And you took me to task a couple of meetings ago about economic development, and I was, you know, and you were saying, well, gee, where's all the, you know, where's all the new factories in Pickwa? That really wasn't my point. My overall point is just the difference in economic development between Pickwa, Sidney, and Troy.
If you say so. Go ahead.
Okay, so I'm going to, I brought my research assistant with me tonight, so, hey, Siri, give me the household income of Pickwa, Ohio. So in a minute, I will have all kinds of statistics on Pickwa, Ohio. And you can do the same thing for Pickwa and Troy. And I choose Pickwa, Sidney, and Troy, because people can see those. But I just want to give you a little indication tonight of the differences. And my whole, my whole point of wanting to change our charter city, charter to statutory, is I think our little system here, I think it's impeding economic development. And I'm just here to tell everybody tonight that I'm not joining the Chamber of Commerce this year. I think they're part of the problem, and you just cannot sell me on the fact. I just do not understand why there are such disparities between Pickwa, Sidney, and Troy. Now, you know, I'm not mad at the Pickwa Chamber, but I'm just saying, I want to be completely independent in my campaign here. So let me just give you a couple of statistics that you can check out for yourself. Do you have Siri? Okay, so then, for example, in Pickwa, our total aggregate income is $425 million. Now, I'm being approximate here, but 425 million. Troy is almost 700 million. So there's $265 million difference in aggregate income. Okay? Now, if you throw Tip City into that, they're 330 million, that's a billion dollars of economic activity going on, this little Sidney, or Pickwa, or Troy and Tip City, compared to Pickwa of 425 million. So when you wonder why people in Pickwa can't afford to paint their houses, that's why. And so it just boggles my mind why we can't compete with that. And I've listened to all these excuses for seven, you know, I've heard Dan French, well, it's because not shovel-ready. There's shovel-ready ground all over Pickwa. I'm on Commerce Drive, there's 20 acres, it's all over Pickwa. And I have researched these excuses on and on and on for seven years, and they're just aren't. There are no excuses why we have to be so far behind Sidney and Troy in economic development. And like, you know, some of it, Gary, I just don't understand. I don't understand, now, again, I don't want to misquote statistics, but I have been told that 70% of the people who work in Pickwa, who live in Pickwa, work outside of Pickwa. That's true?
70% of the workforce in Pickwa come from outside of Pickwa.
So 70% come to Pickwa?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I thought it was just the other way around.
Same thing's true for Troy and Sidney.
Okay. I mean, does it, when you get down to the end of the day, there is a reason that there is a difference between, Sidney, their total aggregate income is 125 million more than Pickwa's. And as a small, you know, you come from a small business background. I mean, just imagine a guy like me, who, you know, trying to make you live in the city of Pickwa, you know, there's no money here. You know, people can hardly pay their utility bills, and it's tough. You know, but you go to Troy, and there's 265 million more dollars in their economy, and just throw Tip City into the equation, there's a billion, you know, and then you come back to Pickwa. I mean, and that's why you have all these businesses that move to Troy. You know, like Andy's Garden. Years ago, we had one of the most beautiful garden centers in Pickwa, Andy's Garden. I mean, they had to close up in Pickwa, there's not, I can't speak for them, but they're no longer here, but they have a gorgeous, beautiful garden center in Troy. And if you go out and talk to any small business guy like myself, you know, they'll tell you that it's just hard to make a living here in Pickwa. So my opinion on that is, you know, and I just can't come up with no other justification for, I wish somebody would explain it to me, you know, and I just, you know, I would just give up. But let me just quickly, just, you know-
You keep going.
Move from that subject to, you know, just the overall. Casey, am I correct, I'm sorry, Commissioner Hines, am I correct that you ran for election the first time? And you won your ward, but you lost the city? You lost the mayor's job?
It was about a 23-vote difference between myself and the other person that ran.
I reminded you about that.
And so I won by something, 20-something votes, or whatever. And because you have to be a commissioner, to be a mayor, I won by default.
I was the only one who came up here and spoke against that. Because, you know, it doesn't make, it didn't make sense to me then, it doesn't make sense to me now. And it's part of the problem with a charter government. You just, when you have just five of you, and you can make your own rules, you know, there's just no consistency to it. So that's exactly what happened. The wisdom to what it was, I mean, why would you want somebody, you know, being a mayor that couldn't even win their own ward? And so what happened, everybody wanted the other guy. They weren't really sold on Casey, because she hadn't been here that long, and so they were mad. So they, you know, they were, so, change the charter. So, boom, change the charter. But you couldn't do that in a statutory government. You know, you wouldn't, you're not, you're going to abide by state law. So that is one of the big problems with a charter government. So then, but just let me show you how ridiculous this is.
Real quick.
So then, so then, five of you now vote for a mayor. And I tried to make this point last week. So five of you vote for mayor, and only four of you were, really had, you know, you don't have a mandate, okay? You didn't, you ran unopposed. So to say that you have some big mandate is wrong, you know? And so, but just check this out. So then, you two, okay, decide that you're going to support Chris for mayor. Okay, you two decide that you're going to support Casey for mayor. So we have a guy who we hear, I wish Commissioner Foote was here tonight, because I like him, and I think he's going, I like all of you. I think you're going to do a good job. So all of a sudden, the guy from the ward that has, you know, the least voter turnout of the whole city, he swung his vote to you, and now, so we have the guy with the least amount of political participation in the whole city electing the mayor. And that is just, that's the problem with a charter government. It's just, you know, it's just, you're in one day and you're out the next day. I'm sure my time's about up, but thank you.
If I can make one comment, when we changed the charter, because obviously I was on the commission during that time, each commissioner picked somebody from their ward to sit down with our law director, who was Stacy Wall at that time, to meet and talk about what we should do, should we change it, should we not? And the person I chose for my ward was Mr. Koenig, who was the one who ran against me. And so each of us chose somebody, so we had ward representation from five citizens to meet with our law director, to talk through, do we change this, what do we do? And the recommendation they brought to us was to change it to what we're doing now. So it wasn't a decision that was ultimately made by the five people who sit up here. It was made by five citizens who worked with our law director, who did a lot of research to come back to us. And the problem is, year after year, it's very confusing for our citizens to understand that they vote for everybody in the city, and we've tried really hard to educate our citizens to understand, if you live in Ward 1, you still vote for all the commissioners in Ward 2, 3, 4, and 5. And so when the mayor was added into that, it became really, really confusing. So it was the best thing that we could come up with, and that the citizens came to us and gave the recommendation. So I just want to, I just want to state it, because there was a lot of thought and a lot of energy that went into that decision.
I could go on for three or four more hours on this subject, but I'm going to sit down right now. But I only want to say, look what it produced. Look, I mean, I don't mean this toward you guys, but our city government is a joke. I mean, four of you sitting up here, I mean, you're sitting there without any mandate whatsoever. Now, it's not your fault, and you guys should be applauded. I mean, I take my hat off to you guys for running, for getting involved, and I do.
Thank you. And you're welcome to run as well.
And I would say that-
It doesn't, it's, let me, so you, okay, I don't, it won't change a thing. That's the reason I don't run.
Okay. I appreciate that.
It ain't ever going to change in this charter government. But I can go on forever.
I appreciate you. Thank you for coming up.
And if I can just say that I think we have five very qualified people up here, and I know the heart and soul that the five of us put into this job, as well as our mayor. And I'm really excited about what we have here as we move forward as a city.
Same here.
And I would say also, just stick around, watch.
Thank you.
Joe Drapp, 1366 Park Avenue. It wasn't, the old people would remember this, it wasn't all that long ago that the citizens voted for the mayor, as well as the commissioners. But we had the situation arise where Dave Martin got the most votes for the mayor, but failed to win his commission seat. So at that time, it defaulted to the commissioners making the decision as to who the mayor is. And I believe under our current system, that we have five different voices, not plus Gary, involved in all the decisions. And Chris has done a fantastic job of communicating with the people, the people here. So I admire you for that.
I appreciate that.
I plan to be buried here, and I love it here, and I love the people here, so. And I had a business in Troy, so, but I didn't tell them I brought the fruits of that to Pickwa, because I love this town.
Appreciate that.
Oh, can I ask one question about, would have to put my glasses on. Is that property that's in dispute, is that there just to the east of Swift Run, one of those lower properties?
Yes.
And they want 100,000 bucks for that?
Yeah, 110.
Yeah, okay. Enough said. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Evening, Honorable Mayor, Commission Members. My name is Greg Dixon. I am running for county commission this year. I just wanted to come and introduce myself. I am running for the open seat that is being vacated by Jack Evans, who is retiring. The primaries in March, the election's not until November. We're talking about January next year, before anybody will take those seats. This is going to be an interesting year, because all three seats are open in an unusual set of circumstances. I am not here to make a stump speech. I'm here to say that my history is, I was law director of Troy for a long, long time. But the last 10 years, I have been the Miami County Juvenile Probate Judge. I retired in 2018. I worked till 2019, but I retired in 2018 because I couldn't run again. I was too old. Well, I didn't think I was too old to offer my services as a public official. And so with 10 years of working at the county, supervising scores of employees, working with budget process with the elected officials who are there now, working with millions of dollars of budget in my departments, I believe I have the experience to be able to work with the other county commissioners in the next, after the next election. I would point out, as an aside, that it could be, depending on who's elected, that you might have three commission members who live in Troy. I live in Newton Township. I live out in the country. I live on a farm. And I would think that maybe a little bit of that voice of some rural nature might help to provide a little balance. I still might lose all of the votes of urban-rural questions, but at least we might hear a rural perspective if I was elected. I hope you can contact, I'm going to hang around. People say, gee, what are your issues? Really doesn't matter what my issue is. I want to know what your issues are. Those are the ones that need to be addressed. I can make up some, but I don't know. We do have problems with courthouse security, healthcare, infrastructure, maintaining a balanced budget, the safety of our citizens. Those are all things that are important, and I think that you think they're important too. But if you have something else you would like to add to that mix, I'd be happy to hear it. If, if you have, and I wanted to put my face with the name, in case you forget, and the one last thing, my last name is Dixon. X marks the spot when you get into the polling booth and make that mark. Thanks for meeting all of you, and thank you for hearing my comments.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Any other public comment? We'll have the city managers report.
Yes, I'd just like to announce that as we're seeing retirements happen, Candy Eder, who has worked in our finance department, will be retiring at the end of this month with over 30 years of employment with the city. So some of those longtime employees are starting to take their retirements. Some of the commission members and staff attended the chamber ribbon cuttings, the recent ones they've had for new businesses, including Queen Exhibits, Employee Direct Care, Alley and Bradel LLC, and Pickwatt Spa. I found out today, we've got two new businesses that announced, Brightview Drug Treatment Center on High Street, and the Blue Violet Shop, which will be on West Water Street. And the chamber has two more new business ribbon cutting scheduled in a couple of weeks. So getting a few new businesses, which we're always happy to get on any time. So that's all I have, unless you have questions for me.
No, appreciate you letting us know about the new businesses. Every business that comes to town adds to our tax base. We appreciate it. Commissioner Hines?
The only thing I want to say is just congratulations and thanks to Bill Harding, as he has worked here for almost 50 years, and has done a lot for our city and our citizens. So I wish him the best in retirement, and may he enjoy his family, and just some time to himself. So, thank you.
Commissioner Grissom?
I want to reiterate that with Mr. Harding's, man, that's a long service, that's greatly appreciated from us. So this last week, I just recently had a baby girl.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
What's your name, her?
Hannah Joan.
Hannah Joan.
So this is one of those, that was just kind of a reminder why I got on the council in the first place. You know, I really want to do something to make an impact for my children as they grow older. And it was kind of interesting, I was looking up, because I hear people all the time say, you know, we want to make Pickwa a place where our kids want to stay or come back to. So I was trying to look at some of the statistics, see what the rate of children that might come back or whatnot. And it's interesting to find that, and I don't know how accurate these are, but 37% of Americans will not even leave outside their hometown, except for military and college. Those that do go off to college, about 50% will come back home to live with their parents because of student loan debt. And then also, most live within 18 miles of their mothers. And that even goes higher if, with people making less than $30,000, relying more on family and local relatives to take care of their kids. So I guess the point I was trying to make is just trying to look at seeing what us as a community, what we can do for our kids, so even if they don't come back, they may not even leave. And so I think it's important for us to work as a community to better develop, and, you know, I think we are doing that. We've got a strong commission that's working towards that. So I wanted to remind people that we do have that work session next week, talk about the community pool. So really wanting to get the community involved, and it really helps build for our future and for our children. So.
Thanks. We got to figure out a way. I've got three kids that are in Columbus. They say they're not coming back. But I have a fourth one graduating this year, and she's staying. So maybe I'm on to something.
Well, I can attest to kids coming back, because we've got a lot of Pearson kids moving back.
Good.
Yeah, they've spent their younger years in Columbus and the area around Columbus, and they decided, oh, we're going to have a family, so let's move back home. So it's really exciting.
Pickwa is home.
Yeah, if you haven't already received, we got our spirit newsletter in the mail, so be sure to look it over. There's a wonderful article for William Pittzenbarger, honored. Also, the calendar events is listed on the back. And Ryan and Amanda are celebrating St. Patrick's Day downtown. They have a 5K, and then the Sam Pearson 5K race is at the end of May. So lots of things going on in Pickwa, lots of reasons to get involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. The only thing I have is, I do want to congratulate Bill Harding. 45 years is a long time to work for the city. I did half of that for him, and I couldn't hold a candle next to him. So congratulations to him. Congratulations to Commissioner Grissom and the birth of his new baby. Commissioner Foote did get married last Friday, and so want to congratulate him as well, even though he's not here. He's toeing the line, from what I understand, tonight. So he's doing his dad duties, and I like that. We are going to have a, I want to remind everybody of the work session on the 27th, I believe, it's a Thursday, at 6:00 PM right here, about the pool. And people need to understand that the pool, the talk about the pool will mainly settle, or talk about what kind of facility that people would like, and talk about types of financing. Those are two major things. But getting a new pool here, or redoing the pool, whatever we decide to do, is a 10-step process. And let me explain to you, let me read the process to you. First thing that has to be done is to determine what facility is desired to be constructed. And then they issue an RFQ, or Request for Quotes, is that right?
Qualifications.
Qualifications for a pool architect. Then there's a selection process for the pool architect. And then we have to develop and concept plans and detail cost-values. And then we determine the financing, exact financing. And we can come up with ideas about fundraising versus levy versus a combination of the two. We can do that next week, but, I mean, there has to come, we have to come to terms at some point. And then there's, we issue the RFQ for the design. You develop a construction plans and specification. All that has to be done, and then you bid the project out. And then you award the bid to someone, and then there's construction. So it's not like we're going to talk about this on Thursday, and then it's going to happen five months later. It's a process, but we want everybody involved in the process. It is a community pool. We want the community made aware. We want the community's involvement. So we want people to come to that meeting. So if you're available, and you have any thoughts, any ideas, any suggestions, any, even criticisms, bring them. We'll listen. We want input. So, only other thing is that on next Monday, the 24th, 6:00 PM at Edison State College, I will be giving a keynote speech for Black History Month to the diversity program at Edison State College. If you're free and you want to learn a little bit about Pickwa history, and specifically my history, come on out. And we'll talk about it for a few, and give you some background on that. And aside from that, I enjoy being the mayor. I've had several meetings outside of this place. I've met people at Winans, at various different places, just to talk. And don't stop. I mean, if you have questions, feel free to call me, contact me. I can keep Gary pretty busy by forwarding your questions to him and getting answers. So, and without, and with that said, I have nothing further. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.